It's seven, so I think we'll call it order with, start with Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next thing would be the approval of agenda. Can I have that motion, please?
Sure, I'll make that.
Oh, welcome. Second?
I'll second it.
Second, great.
And only thing I would say is if folks are willing to look at that telecom purchase under BMD, that was the only change that I see.
I think it still fits in there.
Yeah. Just so everybody knows we're getting there.
There's an error on the agenda, I think.
All right.
On number five, I think we're approving the minutes from January 22nd.
Oh, yep, should be 122, not 108.
All right, make that edit. All right, with that edit, all those in favor? Great, is that good? All right, that's unanimous. So, the next thing, there's no public. Nobody online?
Anybody online?
All right, then we'll move on to approval of those minutes. And can I have a motion for that?
Sure.
Make the motion.
Okay, Gray, you want second?
Sure.
Okay. Any edits that need to be done, or anything that anybody see? So... Hearing none, all those in favor? Great, that's everybody. Lovely. So the next thing is sports update.
I did share with everybody these documents. So, overview, winter athletes, which is what we're in right now. We had a total of 158 students register, and you'll see the number that are enrolled at Mill River, broken down into male, female, and then the percentage participating. So we're at 43% for the winter sports season, and then just shows breakdown of how many student athletes we have with these sports we offer. And then, our registration for spring sports is open, just kind of showing you how we get that out to the public. It's on our Facebook page, on our school website, it's sent out to all 7 through 12 families. And then you can see, we're at 63 registered athletes for the spring so far, which starts in March. I've linked in here links to find information, games, scores, schedules, and we have been trying to do week of, so you can see for the week what's happening at the high school level. We talked about when I was here back in October, Arbiter Sports and using Arbiter Pay to pay our officials, and we have moved to that, and it is amazing. I can go in and pay the official right after the game is over. And we're still working some kinks out with the business office and knowing how much money to put into the account and all that, but it seems to be working really well, and I know the officials really appreciate getting that money right then and there instead of waiting a month or so. I've linked in here our upcoming events. So we're hosting the VCCA cheer competition this Saturday here at Mill River at 11. States for Cheerleading is the 15th at Virgens High School. We're going to have our senior games, and I've just included our senior winter photo that we have printed out, and it's in the hallway, down the art hallway, we have all of our posters hung up. States for Wrestling for JV and Middle School, varsity playoffs for basketball, and then we will be hosting a three-on-three basketball tournament at the end of basketball season, right before spring season starts, and it's open to anybody. So we're really looking forward to that and raising some money for the basketball program. Looking ahead, just kind of added to what we've completed for facility projects and what we have in the works right now, we have been working on getting quotes for replacing the middle school gym floor and the main gym floor, quotes to replace some of the main gym doors and doors that go into the wrestling room that are broken right now, and then quotes to resurface our varsity soccer and football field. And then just a quick elementary update, you'll see that 87 students registered for the winter offerings, and the numbers are there. We have currently a 3-4 boys game going on in the middle school gym. And then registration is open for spring sports, and there's been some controversy about whether we were going to have specifically baseball for the spring. I guess there's some things going around in the communities that we're not having baseball, but we are having baseball for elementary again, grades 3 through 6. And again, this was sent out to elementary principals to post and get out to their 3 through 6 families to register. And then Mackenzie, our elementary, or district elementary athletic director, has been doing kind of the same Mill River calendar for the month, so people can see that. It's a little harder with the four schools getting it in one place, so I've been trying to post it too on our Mill River Facebook page because we have a lot of parents that overlap. So that's what I have to share with you right now. Yes?
Unified sports, is that, do we have some teams?
So unified, we'll start at the end of February, Unified Basketball, which is a varsity sport sponsored by the VPA. Mary Colvin and Kim Moore did Unified Bowling this fall/winter, that just wrapped up in December, and Mary is looking, Mary Colvin's looking into getting bocce started for the spring. So that's in the works right now.
Thank you.
Good question.
And what is unified, just, you know, for people who don't know? I like asking dumb questions.
Yes.
You explain it.
Yes, so it's any student, like IEP 504, special needs, especially for Unified Basketball, we have athletes and partners, so the partners are helpers to the student athletes. And for bowling and bocce, any student can participate, doesn't matter, and then they kind of break it down into groups within the sport. Yeah, it's actually really popular, bocce is in particular, so we're excited about that.
The last meeting, we upped your stipends for paying-
Petty cash.
Petty cash?
Yes.
And could you just explain that a little bit more of, just like, what are we, like, what are the events particularly where we pay for those things and stuff like that?
Usually at the end of every season, we get like a mileage bill, we get officiating fees, and those all just go through as a PO and get paid. So unfortunately, unfortunately, we have teams that are growing, so we don't know until day of or a couple of days before how many students will be participating, and it's a per-dollar athlete fee. So we've been using petty cash to write the check of that day with an invoice and then be reimbursed from my whatever line item it comes out of. So we're running into a lot of the time where we have not enough money to cover wrestling going out, alpine skiing, snowboarding, and then when we get into spring, track and field, and those can be anywhere from $100 to $350 a whack. So we asked for that increase to cover that and not have to wait for a board meeting to send another check out and all that, so greatly appreciated, and it's great because we have so many people and athletes participating that we needed, we needed some more of that.
Anybody else have anything?
I guess I just, I do have another question, given the numbers and everything, are we seeing less students being cut who try out for teams?
So we really don't have any cuts.
Yeah.
The only team we had tryouts for this winter was Cheerleading, and that's based on numbers that you can put on the mat for what division you stay in. So nobody was necessarily cut, they were put as an alternate instead of on the competition mat, but that has changed week to week, like who's on the mat and who's not on the mat. So that was a little difficult for some students and families to kind of wrap their heads around because it's always just been, oh, everybody's on the mat. So it took some communication and just some back and forth talk, just to, nobody was cut, but they were going to put the best eight on the mat, and to win a state championship, that's the end goal for Cheerleading, so that's like the only sport right now.
That was competitive.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the Mill River English update.
Hello, I'm Jen Severance, I'm the department chair for the English department here at Mill River. I did share a slideshow with you with just some information that I was going to quickly touch upon, and if you want to dive a little further, there's some more information there. We currently have five full-time, I'm sorry, four full-time English teachers and one half-time English teacher. Wendy Savory teaches a mixture of English and French, she also teaches drama. We have Devon Bradford, who teaches 7th, I teach 8th grade, Leonard Bartonstein teaches our 9th grade, Carrie Clancy, who is new this year, she is teaching our 10th grade, and then again Wendy Savory teaches some electives and language and drama. I did put in, let me skip to the next one. Just our population of students by grade, just that you had some information as to how many students in relation to the testing, I did put STAR 360 scores and the Vermont CAP scores at the end of the presentation so that you could kind of compare how many students we have per grade and how many students actually took the test. So, some things that we're doing, we are actually on our second year of a new curriculum in the middle school called Bookworms. I think it is going better this year than it did last, last, there were some growing pains there. Devon and I work closely to kind of navigate ourselves through that curriculum, and we were working with some coaches that had been doing this for 10-plus years, so that was very helpful. Devon is working on understanding others, that's the overarching theme for her grade. My overarching theme is learning to advocate, and it can be anywhere from advocating for the environment to advocating for access, whether it be healthcare or clean water. And then, the next one I do is advocating for the historically marginalized. Sorry, Brian.
No, okay.
We do teach elective courses in the middle school, we choose something that we're very passionate about. So Devon has done a lot in different types of literature, she's doing literary exploration right now, and the kids are doing projects with fairy tales and folklore, and she's got one student, I think, that's doing mythology and science fiction. And then I, in the 8th grade, am doing, I did creative writing last year, and this year I did a class on the Holocaust, which has been very popular, there are a lot of kids that love this class. So I explore, you know, different facets of the Holocaust. I was able to take both my semesters of students to Boston the second day of school. And we went to an Auschwitz exhibit, and it was very powerful for them, they enjoyed themselves. And I'm hoping to take them on some other trips, I would really love to do so. Let's see, then we have Leonard Bartonstein, he teaches 9th grade. He does a lot of independent reading in his class, working with books, reading skills, building, reading comprehension, trying to get them to find a joy of reading, some students have a hard time with that. Then we have Carrie Clancy, and she has created some really intriguing electives and classes in her repertoire. She's doing classes like Harlem Renaissance, and next year she's doing like a whole murder, not murder mystery, but mystery in novels elective, and I, you know, I had to order the books, and I was looking at the books, and I'm like, oh, this one looks good. So I'm really excited for her that she's finding her niche here at Mill River with this. And then we have Wendy Savory, and Wendy teaches AP Lit and Comp. She also teaches some other electives, Vermont Wild 1 and 2. Not sure if you're familiar with Vermont Wild, but it's all these comical stories about Vermont Fish and Wildlife officers and what they have to deal with, and the kids really enjoy it. And then she does 20th century lit, sorry. And then, I'm not going to go through all this data because I think you have seen this before, but I did include STAR 360 data by risk levels last year versus this year, and the documents that you see where I've written numbers on, that's how many students out of that total number are in that bandwidth. Just so that you had some clarity on those scores. And then the last one is Vermont CAP, which they follow more of our proficiency score with a 1 through 4.
So my first question is, so last time, we were talking about Bookworms, and how basically it just didn't align with the class length and all that stuff. So what, how, what is the-
We're still having that struggle.
Heck. But what, so are, but are there positive outcomes coming out of it now, or does it feel like it's still-
So I think there are a lot of positive outcomes that are coming out of it. Routine is one of them, and the students really thrive on a routine. I believe you had a conversation with Devon that the scores in elementary school actually rose 150%?
Well, I said that, like, I don't, I said like right now, there are kids, there are whole classes where kids are not, there are not kids at risk.
Yep.
Right? So like as we talk about like the bump areas.
And that's what we're hoping for, is that when those kids come up to middle school, we don't have those kids that are at risk. We have kids that may need intervention-
Yeah.
But not are in the bottom 15 percentile.
And those kids, because the elementary kids probably are the one, like 3rd and 4th grade is probably the ones who started in preschool with it, or is it like 2nd grade that's-
So right now, we're in year 3 of-
Of everybody doing it?
Kind of holistic, everybody's doing it. And year 4 of kind of bumping around a bit.
Yeah.
So it's coming, right? But, you know, even being in year 3, next year, they'll get kids who've had like a, you know-
Some amount of it, yeah.
Some amount of it, right? So it should-
At least two years of it.
It should really start to pay off pretty soon for everybody, and you know, there'll always be differentiation needs, always, right? Because there'll always be kids that have learning disabilities, there will always be kids where reading comes a little bit harder, there will always be kids moving in and out of our district. But, we're hoping that those needs of trying to serve kids who run 10 different grade levels in one room will hopefully go mainly to maybe, you know, four or five different grade levels in one room with time. And at the very least, when we say kids thrive on routine, kids will have years and years of the same routine.
Yeah. And my, I mean, my, I, and I don't think my daughter is like an exceptional, you know, I think she's a great kid, and she's, she's been in this program the whole time, and she can technically be reading at like a 6th grade level already. I, you know, we'd read at home and do all that stuff, but I, the program seems to be like really good at teaching, and I, and there's other kids that are in her class that actually like read when they go home and stuff like that. And I think that is the biggest lift that we're asking any of you to do, because I don't, I think everyone in the country is like, we forgot how to teach kids how to read for a long time.
Reading is pretty foundational, sorry Jen.
And that's one struggle that I'm, I have personally in my classroom, is I have a lot of students that do not want to read. They would rather have social media or do something on their computer, and that's a struggle, but we do it.
All right.
And, you know, they're at least getting the reading inside the classroom, the comprehension, the work that goes with it, they're having that routine, hopefully that sticks with them. We are still struggling on the time, but we're trying to, Devon and I work very closely together as to, okay, we can do, we need to do this activity because it's important for the comprehension and for the class speaking, but maybe we don't need to do this activity, so it just cuts a little bit of time out of that lesson so that we can fit in.
And I just want to say thank you to Devon and Jen, because we handed them this curriculum that takes 60 minutes a day and said, do what you can in 45 minutes a day. And they have never been given like such a set curriculum in the history of them working here, and it was such a shift. Right? And so, you know, it took, it took, it took a major shift, it took a lot of work, and, you know, so I am really grateful for that.
Does anybody have any other things they would like to ask? Lovely. And I, you know, I can't, I, like, just, given like, especially because we just saw it, like, you know, last week, the national numbers came out of just, and in general, how everybody's dropping except for a few states that did better, but in general, I can only imagine how difficult it is, and I appreciate all the hard work that you guys have to do.
Thank you.
And I think Jen's got a great point, the idea that reading stamina has disappeared and been eroded over the years as social media has become far more easy and engaging to access, you know, and I think as our elementary teachers are talking about building reading stamina, great, if they've done that for years before they get to middle school, then it's a little, little easier. It's, it's hard getting a student in middle school that just doesn't want to read anything because they haven't.
Well, it's also, it's like, we're a percentage of it, but then at home, if no one's reading at home, then it, it makes it even harder.
Awesome, thank you Jen.
Thank you very much. Superintendent-
Sean was going to share some-
Oh, sorry.
No. Additional Mill River updates.
Sorry, I try to take any opportunity to talk about Mill River that I can. Can you pop me up there, Brian, do you mind?
Do you want to present, because I don't think-
I can.
Sound and stuff might not work quite the right way unless you present.
That's what we're trying, right?
Sorry. I had to bump you to present the other ones, sorry.
Try that one more time. All right, we'll give this a shot. So, a couple of updates for Mill River. I wanted to start off with a little bit of data, not a whole ton, just kind of an appetizer, if you will. So this year, Mill River started tracking behavioral data through a program called Power School, people would be familiar with that as a grading platform. In years past, we've used other things like Google Forms. Staff complete a form essentially, one is a student issue, and then the office follows up with it, it's an automatic system, it's actually really helpful, so things don't get lost in processing. This mirrors a lot of what the 2324 school process looked like, it's just a little bit of a different platform. For semester one, we've seen a decrease in behaviors, it's a staff-reported behaviors of about 30%, which is pretty awesome. And I will point out where I think some of that's coming from, we're talking about what exactly has changed between this year and last year, and kind of what have we done systematically, and I've got a couple of points I'll get to. We have some graphs too, which are really fun, which is cool. I'm going to give you like the thousand-foot view just to make everything's life easier. Over the course of the year, of any given year, we see behaviors ebb and flow. They typically spike before holidays, they kind of ebb, you know, kind of on the other end of that, people come back, they tend to have a pretty typical lifecycle. Blue on this is last year's, red is this year's. There's a little bit of variation on date because, you know, Christmas is slightly different than other places, but in general, you can see where they sort of spike and don't spike. In particular, right around that October 1st date last year, it's kind of over that side, you see a humongous spike that doesn't happen this year, as an example. So this is stuff that we're pretty proud of. The yellows are critical incidents, these are like sort of big item things that happen in the building. I would say anecdotally, we have maybe one such as like Contra Band is an example, like one every six weeks, something like that, it kind of depends, but in general, not a whole lot. Behavior by grade, I shared this with faculty today, and we all got kind of a giggle out of it, in that it does not surprise a teacher to know that the bulk of our behaviors are regularly in 9th and 10th grade and in 7th grade. That does not come as a shock to, I think, most people who've topped those grades in terms of the growth process in general. I will say, just to be transparent about data, 11 and 12, it is often that our students who have not yet found their place will go to Stafford and will find their place at Stafford. So those numbers are perhaps a little iffy, but also worth just sort of thinking about as a behavioral progression. It's also kind of cool that 8th grade is at like less than 10%. I'm interested to know more, I think some of that is about personalities in our 8th grade, but I don't want to promise that. But, our, it's fun. Behavior by type, I think this is interesting to sort of see what are we dealing with for the most part. Of those, inappropriate behavior is the biggest at a little over 30%. Inappropriate behavior is sort of a big catch-all, it can be everything from like I dropped water on the floor, to I knocked over a chair, to I told someone that they were being mean, it could be a lot of different things. Things that I also note, class cutting, it is an ongoing process that we combat, we have ongoing conversations and follow-ups there, it's another big thing we deal with. But things like, you know, harassment and bullying, directed profanity, physical aggression, not a whole lot of that stuff going on for the most part, especially compared to the bigger, bigger behaviors. I'm hoping to have kind of semester-to-semester comparisons for you, kind of after we roll up semester two, so we can talk about that year to year.
Harassment, hazing and bullying, hazing harassment.
Yeah, that one. So, kind of those situations of bullying. So not a whole lot compared to some of the other things. So just some statistics, 264 students had no documented behavior, about 74% of the building, which is pretty cool. So right about three-quarters, you don't run into anything. Of the exactly 100, could not have made it up, made statistics very simple, Bronson, just look away, this is not great math, thank you. Although it is, it's okay. There were 100 unique students, 48 of those students only had one write-up for the entire semester. So half of those, again, only one of those. And in general, we're talking about kind of less than 10 students making up the bulk of these documented behaviors. The 10, the under 10 students are students that we're familiar with, they're being supported in all sorts of ways. Frankly, looking at the data, there were no surprises, and when you're looking at behavioral data, in some ways, that's like the best you can ask for. You know, these are students we know who are having a hard time, we're supporting them in a lot of ways, and we're seeing decreases across the board. Here's the other one. For semester one, we offered roughly 200 core sections, that's kind of across the plate. One of the things we've instituted this year is really flagging if there's more than a 20% or higher failure rate. That is a little bit of a complicated number in that some of our classes have 20 kids, some of our classes have 3. So that's a little bit hard, but it's one of those positions where we wanted to really say, what is, what is too much that we have to talk about? You know, is there something that has gone wrong here? For school year 2324, semester two, which was last spring, there were roughly 23 sections that would have been flagged if we had been using that process for last year's information. For fall, only one, which is pretty cool. That is, I think, a testament to a lot of different things. We have an ALP program, we have students who are working through ALP, which is great. We have teachers who are meeting kids where they're at. I think we have talked a lot about how to offer in-class supports, we had a lot of professional development on how to work with learners, I think our curriculum choices help support our kids, and honestly, it's just good stuff. And again, this is all teacher-reported information, not that every kid passed, to be clear. You know, we have a few students who did not succeed in fall semester, we're going to support them, but nothing kind of that would raise to a level of wanting to really kind of dig deep into what's, where we are, which is awesome. And again, just so people know, if a student doesn't earn credit, we have a lot of ways to help them make that up, which include independent work, summer school, doing alternative assignments, there's a lot of different ways for them to kind of get back on track. And our teams do a really nice job of trying to support them. All right, here's the thing I'm excited about. So, Mill River is awesome. Mill River is a really cool place, we've been working on some promotional materials to help with our spring recruitment, to share with families who are considering coming to Mill River in the future, and kind of all sorts of stuff like that. Karen McCullough and our librarian Peter Roach, as well as group of musical and composition and production students, were willing to put together and work with me to put together a video that I'm going to share. We're going to share, send this out hopefully to, again, people who are interested in coming to Mill River. This is a rough cut, so no one's winning an Oscar for this, but I think it's kind of cool, and the bulk of it came from students, which I think is probably even cooler. So here, assuming this is going to work.
Currently, I'm a biology teacher, and I'm the chairperson of the Science Department here at Mill River.
Awesome. What brought you here to Mill River?
Well, I was looking for a teaching position, and so I applied for a bunch of different positions across the county, and I was interviewed here, they called me back for a second interview, and then they called me back for a third and final interview. And by the time I got home that night, there was a message on my answering machine telling me to report to work the next day.
Awesome.
And I've been here ever since. This is my 31st year here.
Awesome.
If you're thinking about joining, whether you're an adult or a student, we are a wonderful community in this building. We care about each other, we love each other, we feel each other's pain, and we laugh a whole lot. The best part of Mill River is the students. The best part of Mill River are the students that we have here.
Awesome.
So, that's the promo video. As I said, it's a rough cut, so there's some stuff to kind of tweak a little bit. Some of those skips were just because we're streaming them, but that's kind of the gist of what we're talking about, which is super cool. Oh, gosh. And questions that I can answer.
Anybody have any questions?
No, but, you know, we want to hype up the 50th year. Next year is the 50th-
Got it.
...year anniversary for Mill River, so maybe there could be a little-
Happy to add some more stuff.
Flip in there.
We're going to, we're going to change some stuff around. We're also going to, we've got some feedback from students about like their own ability and like length of willingness to watch a video, as an example. So one of the things we're going to do, we have a number of teacher interviews that are all like seven or eight minutes. We're going to string them all along to a longer video, so that if someone was interested, they'd be willing to watch a 30-minute video of people talking about their Mill River experience, stuff like that. But this is just sort of a, kind of zippy, fun kind of deal, which was super cool. Any questions? All right, my normal at the end, because I can't help myself, I like to shout out people that you might not know. So, this is Kim and Ari, our athletic director, who did a presentation earlier. So this is, I didn't actually realize Kim was going to be here, so this is going to be awkward for all of us. Kim's job is often really thankless. She gets thanks from lots of people, but there are a million and a half moving parts, many of which we'll never see, which include things like, oh, hey, who's going to keep the books for this game? And suddenly she is having to keep the books. We get people who are frustrated that their kid was or wasn't played. There's also just high expectations that Kim holds, and she winds up having to take one of the cleaning apparatuses and make sure that it's up to her standards. And I think it is important. I asked her if I could send this picture, and she said no, and then she said yes, and then it's a funny ending. But I think it really speaks to the work that Kim does, and I just want to highlight that for a second. Number two, this is Jay Emel, he is the president of Booster Club. Booster Club does a ton of stuff for us. This is the snack cart that they built for this winter. They offer all sorts of stuff there. If you are ever here for basketball, there is a whole plethora of options, not just popcorn for your pleasure. So lots of stuff going on, and Jay's here all the time, and I think you'd probably prefer I not give him a shout-out, but like, if you're here for basketball, Jay's probably here too, which is super cool, as are many other people, but Jay's also the one running back and forth. Last but not least, I also want to shout out Shannon Barone, who's the behavior interventions here at Mill River. When we talk about it, it's what has changed between this year and last year. Shannon has come in as her BI. She works with students who are having tough times. She lets Karen, who's the assistant principal, and I have a free hand sometimes, and does really, really amazing work. Also Cindy Van Dean is there, is one of the elementary school BI's. And I also want to shout out some of our students. Kalen is a student of ours who has completed all of her graduation requirements through support, through the ALT program, through a whole lot of other people putting some energy and work in. She's currently doing a flexible pathway, which is a, an opportunity for them to get work experience and life experience, and is in one of our elementary schools kicking butt and taking names, which is really, really wonderful. So through some of our work and in small ways that we've been supported by the board and the community, we've been able to make some really impactful changes to our kids. So, thanks for that, and we've got a lot of good people.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Superintendent search update?
That would be me, I guess. I'll keep it brief. We, I mentioned it at the Personnel Committee meeting tonight. Our first meeting of the search committee is February 10th at 4:00 here, and then we have another meeting the 17th, which also is planned to be here. And that's basically where we're at. The folks who are on the committee have access to applicants, and I guess the best thing would be that by February 10th, folks get a chance to look at all of the applicants so that on the 10th, we can look at them and discuss them and move on from there.
And there are multiple candidates?
Yes.
Great. Fantastic.
Mike, can you remind, who's on the, from the board, who's on the high management?
Me, Andrea, and Sarah.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right.
And then actually, Kim's on it, Jen's on it, Sean's on it. I'm not going to be able to remember everybody off the top of my head. Simonetti, Kristen Simonetti is on it. Mike Gamash, Zach Byrd. Jen, I mentioned. I know I'm forgetting a couple of folks.
You got pretty darn close.
Maggie, Maggie Ames. I think, that's about it. But anyways, there's, it's really, I think, a varied group. We tried to balance it between males and females, experienced, fairly new, elementary and high school, and I think we sort of accomplished that.
E4 Risk Management.
E4. I'll start talking while Stan decides if he's going to walk over or chime in through the screen.
Just walk by the door.
Oh, okay. This is required in Policy E4, and I would remind the board to be thinking about if this is a worthwhile update to get annually. This is one of the reports that I think might not be the most important one for us to do, but we do it annual, annually because it is in policy. So to, to assist schools with the management of risk, we work with Visbit. They're our insurance carrier. Not every school in Vermont uses Visbit, but almost every school does use Visbit, and they offer some wonderful services to us. One of the best ones they have is, is that we can just call up and ask any question we have at all. So if we're saying, hey, kids want to build a skateboard ramp out back as part of their PE program, a risk we can take on or a risk we can't take on? And they'll tell us. They'll let us know if that's allowable or not from a risk management standpoint. So, Stan, do you want to add anything to that?
I'll just add that, you know, it is a self-insurance group statewide. Currently, we have 51 school districts and supervisory unions that are part of it, along with four tech centers and four private schools. So obviously, you know, that size of a group can go out to market and get a better pricing insurance-wise than us going out there trying to do it ourselves. So that backing is always, price-wise, is I've always given it advantage to the district in regards to insurance and coverage. Like Brian had said, just to reiterate, the services they provide are much more than what you would get if you tried to do it yourself, go to a, you know, another agency as a sole school district.
And something, something I'll throw out there that actually we were talking about last year, so not too long ago, when Tinmouth was thinking about leasing part of the church in Tinmouth to use as an educational space, Visbit was pretty darn supportive in helping us sort through the lease process to make sure everything was in place so that we weren't, you know, doing something funny there that would lead to liability on our end. So that's a real practical example of, of where they supported us. Sorry, Stan.
No, it's okay. And, you know, and the services they provide, like this coming Monday, they'll be doing a site visit with Tim, assessing, you know, all the property at all the schools. Once every three years, we have a, sort of like an inventory or evaluation done of all assets in the school district. And they provide us with a complete, you know, somewhat inventory and the estimated value of all property equipped in the district, which is, which is helpful in regards to getting a fair, you know, coverage, a proper amount of coverage out there in the market. We all, we have the, all the standard coverages, you know, including the old cyber, which is a big thing these days, workers comp. We have some other things in regards to trainings that they provide on a regular basis. Just recently, they've got, you know, trainings in regards to hazing, harassment, and bullying. They, they're doing a Title IX training. They provide training to the custodial staff to get them up to date and current with any kind of certifications. Overall, it's a, you know, I would never recommend at this point ever reading the services.
Anybody have any questions?
Do we, there's no action for us to take here, just informing us.
Yeah, and this is, I'll put another plug in for the Policy Committee. If you want us to give this report every year, it's going to be the same report every year, because nothing really changes, leave it in the policy. If you don't want us to come annually and give you the same spiel-
Oh, I see, this is part of the policy. I got you.
Yeah, we have to. Yeah, we're not bringing it to you for any other reason except policy requires an annual report on risk management.
It makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that in the policy of itself?
It's in the policy.
But it's, but it's specific?
Yep.
So if, and I'm not going to belabor it, but if we don't have it in that policy-
We likely won't do it unless you ask.
Okay.
The thing about policy is to report to us, that's all.
That is part of the, well, I guess that's what I was trying to get at. Is it part of the policy that it has to be reported, or is it the policy that it has to be reported?
It is written into our risk management policy that we are responsible for establishing risk management and insurance program covering our properties. We do that further on in the policy. Superintendent or designee is responsible for preparing, preparing an annual report.
Okay.
So that, we don't have to do this if you don't want us to do this, but because it's in the policy, we do it. We give you an update of where we are and what we do. It just doesn't change a lot.
We're making our way to the E's.
Yeah. Just something to think about.
The only thing I would add is that maybe, you know, it is ultimately your responsibility to make sure that all assets are properly covered, you know, the students are covered, the staff is covered, you know, we have up-to-date workers comp policy. I mean, I once suggested is that maybe you could require this, which is, you know, the issue of a summary, financial summary, or of coverage summary that you could look at and have each year, you know, and that's, you know, would be somewhere at the start of the school year that you would get back.
So file that away when you get to the E policy.
Write it down.
When you get to risk management, talk to Stan.
Yeah.
That's all you got, all you got to remember.
Or something like this is just presented, we don't really go any further. It's just, I would just feel comfortable, make sure that you guys are aware that there is coverage in, in the school district.
I think it's, it's helpful. I mean, that was short, to the point. First, I've heard it, and there'll be new board members every year. I think it's important to know this is why we have Visbit and, and what they look at in terms of risk management, so hopefully the policy-
You may wonder why don't we want to oversee other, you know, maintenance? We're basically part of a state purchasing group.
Yeah. Good. Makes sense.
Lovely. All right, thank you, Stan.
Because we're on the topic-
Yep.
-and you're so organized with your spreadsheets.
Yep.
For-
Trying to be.
-the incoming superintendent, whoever that may be.
Yes, yes.
Yep?
Yes.
Is it this kind of stuff that, like, you know, it's like, I have to do these things every year?
I've got it all on a drive that doesn't, that way if my account just gets deleted, the files live on the drive and the new drive gets shared with the new person. So we've started doing that with folks. So like, when Rebecca came on as executive administrative assistant, we had a drive set up for that, and she got all the stuff. It's a lot easier to manage than it is to try and find and track down and share. So, yeah, we've got that organized, ready to go.
Okay, moving on to bus update.
Connie?
Last year was my first year, and we have seven bus routes that go out in the morning and afternoon. We also did 389 trips above and beyond that. We take the UN students to Connecticut, drop them off, go back down, pick them up, bring them home. We did a trip to New York City. We did this year, a trip to Boston, to the museum with Jen. We have 342 so far this year, not counting spring sports and spring trips within the school, and we've done 280 of those already. And now I'm looking to get another bus for this year. And we have, I reached out to Bluebird, but Bluebird will not send a quote. They will not.
Oh, we tried.
I don't know why, but they just absolutely refuse. I reached out to Lion Company to find out about an electric bus. Never heard back from them. I did hear from Devote and Cressy, and Cressy is a little higher than the other one, but the other one is also further away, and Cressy's has a agreement- And Cressy's has an agreement with Earl's Truck Repair. So even things that are under warranty, if Cressy's is, you know, something that Earl's can do, it can get taken care of there, so we don't have to wait for Cressy's to come over from New Hampshire. But they do have a local man that comes over here and takes care of any recalls and takes, you know, any questions I have, they're right there for me. So I would like the board to go with the quote for Cressy's.
And otherwise, it's just a comparable bus, like it's the same bus fundamentally.
Yes, but we get better service, you know, having Earl's.
And this is an additional bus? We don't have a bus. Is it replacing a current bus or is it an additional?
It would be, there's two of them out there that are old enough that we need to look at letting go, sell them. I know last year, when I first started, we had one that was really bad, so we put it over at Earl's and we used it for parts. So any buses that needed windows, seat covers, back door, front doors, anything we can take off that bus, we used until it was depleted. And then that one went away, and now there's a new bus, or old bus, but new to Cressy's or to Earl's, sitting there as our parts bus.
Not only is Connie a hard worker and always wishing, willing to pitch in even if it's not her job, she's very frugal, too. She is always looking for ways that we can stretch a dollar and still do good work, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but generally, like before COVID, there was just a regular bus replacement time, where it was like they were all staggered, so basically you're getting a bus every year, so.
And we had fallen off of that for a handful of years, so every year we've been trying to get back to get one a year. And we've been budgeting for at least one year, so.
And to get us caught up, it would be three more buses. And then we would have the buses that we needed. I'm also taking care of the buses we get by oil undercoating and making sure that they're, you know, Cressy's is on top of the inspections and anything, you know, like I said, windows or anything that needs to be replaced, we have buses that we pull them off and try not to spend the money where we can use what we already have. But there are two buses out there that I would like to look into either selling or getting rid of.
Great.
Yeah, this is probably a really dumb question, and I hope our presenter didn't say this earlier and I missed it, but just so I understand, that, first of all, it certainly makes sense to go with a local provider, but that price, that's a lease for two buses for seven years? Do I understand that?
That's the full purchase price.
And that's for two buses?
No, that's for one.
That's for one? Okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah, no, 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 it's worth clarifying.
Even for one, that seems like a, I mean, considering what a freaking pickup truck costs, that seems like a great deal.
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, no, that answers my question. I just wanted to make sure I understood the numbers. Thank you.
And I think the other thing that often gets discussed when we're talking about this is the size of the buses and how really, even if we get a smaller bus, or it still doesn't quite make sense for the launch, for the.
No, and with the amount of students that are coming in to Mill River, we went with the larger buses last year with the two of them, and one of them goes down to Ludlow and Mount Holly and that area, and we have a lot of students that ride those buses and they're full.
Can I have a motion to accept the bid?
I'll make that motion.
All right, from WC, Cressy and Sons.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, great. Any further discussion?
I'm just curious how much we put in the budget line for, you said like each year we have a budget line for a bus right now?
I think, I think we put enough, Stan, because last year we saw a price very similar to this. Stan, can you answer that off the top of your head? Do we have enough in the budget for this as priced? Because last year we did see a jump from our traditional, maybe 80,000. It jumped up.
Wow.
Yeah.
I feel like this is probably, this was the price where it was like, oh, this is what like the fancy electric one would be or something like that.
No, that's 300.
Yeah, the electric one is 300 to 400.
We did two, actually, okay, so, yeah, we.
And because we've lost, you know, some leases that were paid off, so we're still, so even though we've seen an increase in the bus prices and an increase in interest rates, we'll still be under budget in regards to the lease being.
Because we had like two or three years where we just didn't buy a bus.
Right, right.
Okay, good question.
You can ask a question.
Well, I was just curious then, like, does it, I guess it's like, we just don't know, but I'm like, that's a huge jump with price from, like, is there forecasted to be a huge jump again? Like, would it be advantageous to get more than one bus? No, that's.
They haven't said anything about another huge jump.
Hard to say it might.
It might, who knows? It's also like, the problem with buying a chunk versus over time is that that chunk then gets, is old at the same time, so then.
Needs to be replaced again.
Yeah, that you need to be able to do that chunk again, so like that's part of it.
Hold some value.
Great, thank you for.
And I don't know, Connie, to say that they're limiting the number of manual buses that are actually manual patching, so they may not do more than just one for us.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. At this point in time, if we asked, the answer would be yeah, next year. Yeah.
But they are limited and they have a certain number of buses that are allocated to Cressy's and to all the other companies, but, so we could ask for two and be told only one.
Got it, yeah, thanks.
All right, all those in favor? And everybody, okay, everybody's good.
Josh, can I just add? This isn't about the bus, it's about bus drivers. And I didn't want to bring it up again during that. How are we doing for bus drivers, Connie?
We have the seven bus drivers we, you know, right now. It was tight because one of our drivers was out with an injury, but I am the fill-in driver, so I was able to take that position and drive it since October 17th.
And that makes a huge difference. Connie, did you tell everybody how many trips you've had to say no to this year?
Not, not that I said no to.
None.
None. Last year, prior to my taking over, there were a lot. Kim would have to call Premier Buses, she'd have to call Ice House Limo, and I never told her no.
And that's not, I understand and appreciate all the work that you do in picking up the slack, and that wasn't my point. My concern was just, this board has wrestled in the past with trying to figure out how best to attract more bus drivers, including salaries and things like that. And so my question is, you know, how do you feel about where we're at at this point?
Right now, I'm in the process, you have to have a trainer in the district to train a bus driver, and I'm in the process of trying to become a trainer for the district. And then we could send them to get their Class B CDL at Stafford and then come to us, and then I could finish the training. They would also need to have their passenger endorsement, their school bus endorsement, their air brake endorsement, and then also be trained on the bus and take the bus license above and beyond a Class B CDL.
But currently, the positions are all filled.
Yes.
So ask us when we try to fill one.
Right.
No, and I appreciate it.
We've been lucky.
I want you to know that I appreciate it. Every morning when I see the buses go by my house.
And anecdotally, it feels like there's less consolidation, but I don't know, but it's so variable, you know, just.
Well, Friday morning, there will be a consolidated route. Friday afternoon, there'll be a consolidated route because we actually have one, two, three, four, five, six trips going out of here on Friday. Along with one driver's out in the morning, one driver's out in the afternoon, and one driver's out both morning and afternoon.
And Connie figures out how to make it work.
And that's my point, I guess, I really want to thank you for the difficult work that you do in running these buses, because to me, it's amazing, and so I appreciate that.
It would be a lot, it would be a lot easier to just not run all the trips.
Yeah, I know.
Connie tries real hard to run all the trips.
I really, the sports trips are something that, you know, I want to see them go. I also, the school trips, the after-school trips, I just, I don't want to say no. So I make miracles happen.
And that's pretty obvious to me, I can tell you that.
So when you send out an email that says it's going to be a consolidated route, do you get any feedback on that? Do parents understand the reason why there's consolidated routes?
It's been pretty good, and Shrewsbury is the one that's really taken the brunt of our consolidated routes, only because those two routes that we have, one comes from one side and one comes from the other and they meet at the school, they're small enough routes that they can fit on one bus. If I tried now to consolidate Clarendon East and Clarendon West, they won't all fit on one bus. So I'm trying to fit, you know, where I can. There's no good way to do the Wallingford buses because one goes to Ludlow and then goes up over 140 into, from east Wallingford, one goes down south Wallingford, and it just, that doesn't mix. And then you have the Lone Rider up to Tinmouth, so.
Yeah.
Wow.
I try not to do consolidated routes, but.
I think just having people understand that it's not because people aren't showing up to work, it's they're up to doing other routes. I didn't really have that, I didn't understand why there were consolidated routes sometimes, but now, understanding that means because a school trip is happening and that bus driver, yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
So that bus driver is not here at 2:30, they've had to either leave at 2:30 or they need to leave at 3:00, but they're not back when the school trip needs to go out. So we'll consolidate so that we have that extra driver to take the school trip and we consolidate.
That's great.
I also don't understand, like, you obviously haven't been here historically, and it's like, but you, was there a time where you just had a plethora of drivers? Like, compared, I know it's tough to hire a new driver.
We had more drivers, yeah.
Just always you had more drivers? And just they weren't running, they would just run maybe a sports route?
You had, you had more folks who were willing to do the part-time work.
Yeah.
And I think the workforce has shifted in a way that if you have a CDL and you work full-time, you can actually do really well. And there's not a lot of incentive to do CDL work part-time for not as much.
So maybe it used to be like, if there was sports, you could just call somebody up and say, can you just drive a bus for today or something like that? And that person used to exist, and now that person does not exist.
I do have a couple coaches that would like to become school bus drivers so that when their sports teams have to go, you know, they want to go out to a game, they don't have to wait for, you know, because there are times where we have two trips wanting to leave at the same time, and I work very closely with Kim Minari and say, something's got to give. And her and I will work together on that so that, you know, the sports teams get out when they can. She'll call the other schools and ask if they can change the times.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
For tonight and for all your work normally. All right, so the next thing we have is Board Education Open Meeting Laws.
So we put that on there just if we wanted, if we wanted to extend that discussion more today.
Just any, great.
Did I just see something about open meeting law?
Maybe, where were you looking?
I was on the internet.
Oh, well.
Yeah, I know, hard to believe. I got an email from somebody, and it wasn't Vermont School Board Association, saying that they were talking about a course or a class or something on the open meeting law.
I'm looking through my school board email right now.
The only thing that was kind of ringing a bell is the weekly SBI. Was it talking about something with like the, at the state level, one of the meetings that they were?
Yeah, but it wasn't the School Board Association, I don't think. I don't know.
Well, we get some like private kinds of things.
Could have been. I'm sorry, I just remembered seeing it today.
Yeah, I'm not entirely.
Sure, and we didn't have something particular for it. I think it was, we were leaving this space in case we wanted to have any talk, or if anyone had any questions that were lingering from the other day. Really, it's just kind of an open space that I think Board Education in general, if there's any other questions that exist. Bronson, you're also a part of this conversation. If you have any questions about how this board is supposed to function or do anything, you can also ask and or chip in.
Because they were talking about not just school boards, but also select boards and other public groups that needed to be aware. I'll look it up.
Right, and I think, yeah, and it's interesting because, you know, we're all, all our towns all kind of interpret it a little differently.
Right.
Especially with just even like Robert's rules of small, of small boards and what they, which part gets more emphasized, things like that. And there's some things that like, you know, we're doing clearly better on, and especially, you know, like, well, we were doing really well with minutes and things like that, which I think, I know I'm personally was not doing a good job at with some of my minutes and things like that.
Five days happens fast.
It happens really fast. And so, yeah, so, but if we don't have anything that we'd like to particularly talk about, we can move on.
I mean, one thing for us just to keep in mind, though, is we did discuss making sure to come back to this with the new.
Reorganization.
Reorganization, which is not that far away.
Nope, it goes so fast. Right, yeah.
And the School Board Association does have webinars that you can access.
And they really do, like, you know, they are just so helpful, those webinars, like, it's surprising, like, you know, there's still a lot of gaps in them because there's only, you know, they only do them for like an hour, but like really the bullet points on almost all of them are really helpful when you're trying to figure something out.
I did the superintendent evaluation one, and it was like, holy cow.
I mean, it's like, we don't need to reinvent the wheel for everything. It feels like a lot of us, you know, especially because there's a lot of new people, that it's just in general, you know, oh, what actually are our responsibilities and what are, where are the lines? So then we'll move on to personnel.
I'm sorry. I was nodding. Okay, we met this evening, and we have a couple of contracts to bring before the board. First of all, and I would make a motion that we offer a contract to Kaitlin Haskins as a 1.0 full-time equivalency educational support staff at Clarendon.
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Two. One, got them all.
Okay. Secondly, I would make a motion to offer a contract to Zach Allen as varsity football coach, as recommended by Kim, our athletic director. So, I make that a motion.
I'll second.
Just for discussion, Zach stepped in at the end of last year and ran through the end of the year, and now he's applying for the position for this year. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we did not schedule another Personnel meeting because of the reorganization, and I gave you the superintendent update earlier. So, Lenny's done.
All right. Policy, first read of B3, formerly D13. Anybody?
I think, so, B3, this was the one, and Jody, feel free to jump in. This is one that we actually thought we could get rid of. Is that correct?
No.
Oh.
That would be rescind, we'd be rescinding it.
This is just one that we're just moving to reorganize it, to be with other employee-based ones.
Okay.
So, it's D17, moving over up to the Bs, so nothing is changing other than the number and the date.
Perfect, thank you for being organized on that.
No worries.
No problem. You're not, didn't know you were going to be the representation. All right, so then, all those in favor?
Will do we?
Right?
We do a motion.
Do we act, do we?
It's a first read.
Yep.
Do we make an action?
We, don't we typically accept it for first read so that we can send it on to the Herald? Yep.
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept it for first read.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? And it's just for, you know, it's just the Ploy Code of Conduct, right?
Yeah, I think it's good to keep that.
And it's a renumbering, I think that's important to, to state.
Right.
Can I ask, no, I'll do Agenda Building, I'll ask, sorry.
All right, all those in favor? There it is. Great. So then, policy, is there another policy meeting before restructuring?
I believe so.
Uh, 11th, 211.
And we're going to be.
Yeah, there's a policy meeting next week, I believe.
The Policy Committee sent out a survey, or with the support from, from faculty, sent out a survey to parents about the cell phone. So, now we have from staff and faculty, and, and I think it's like close to 200, right? It's like 180-something. And people responded to that survey.
Yeah, I think it was 173, I think I saw.
Okay, nice. Yeah, so we'll have, we'll be continuing that discussion next week.
It's got to be one of the most responding meetings.
Set up, right?
What was that?
The policy meeting.
Yeah, we just got the notice today.
It's the 11th.
11th.
The 11th, okay, thank you.
Lovely. So then Buildings and Grounds is next.
I have them in here, do you want to look them up and report out?
Oh, yeah.
Because you chaired it.
Yeah, I did at that time.
We did a lot, that's why.
That's true, so, we met with Tim, and it's this, it's a very similar problem that exists in a lot of his projects, and like what we heard from Connie, that you reach out and you ask for bids, and you don't get bids. The, one of the ones that we're trying to push him on, because we'd like to get it done over the summer, is Wallingford and Tinmouth Carpets, at least pushing for, seeing, there's some other places in some of the other schools that could have some.
And if he didn't have bids at the meeting, he does have bids now.
Yeah, he had start, he at least had one, and then he was going to put it in the paper for asking for more bids.
Has been in the paper. I think he actually has a bid from a vendor for, for those two schools, and also for Mill River.
Yeah.
Down in the art swing.
Yep.
It's in the paper, and we'll wait and we'll see if we get other bids, but he does have at least one, so that when the timeline runs out, we'll be good.
Right, because I think, and for, in this case, one of the things is there's, for at least those, I don't know about here, but there is an abatement.
Asbestos.
Asbestos.
Yeah, I don't know if there is here, too.
That was the, one of the sticking points, but, so hopefully, we'll have that wrapped up, because that one.
That would be great to do over the summer, absolutely.
We also talked about the, in Wallingford, they've been asking for a walk-in freezer cooler for a long time, and now it seems like it's actually a project that's doable. And so he got a bid on that, and.
Challenge with that one, just so everybody's caught up, the electrical and the pouring of the concrete pad are actually going to be a lot harder to line up and get done than the actual purchase of the cooler. So, that's what Tim's trying to chase right now, so we can't really purchase and have it installed till we have the pad and, and that stuff lined up, unfortunately.
Right. And it, you know, it was the same kind of problem, where it was just trying to find people to do it. We also talked about, Kim mentioned it, about looking at redoing the floor. The main gym is pretty much done, but they can't, I don't think they can even finish it one more time.
No.
I think they're at the nails, so, you know, that's just the fact of having an older building. And so, there are companies that instead of act, the middle school gym floor would be looking at maybe replacing it, and you can just do an overlay, so not putting in a brand-new wooden floor, but putting in a, a surface that you see in a lot of like track fields, like that rubberized surface.
Because that's what's in there now, actually.
Yeah.
It's not wood.
Yeah.
So, putting something over that.
Putting just a little over top of that. And the other thing that we talked about was is the parking lot here. And just getting, because I feel like it's been three years or two years since it was discovered that there was a problem with the water runoff, and we were not up to date with the state. And now we're finally in the, close to the end of that process, where once that's done, we'll actually be able to do a resurfacing out here. And we also talked about what made sense for Clarendon, because it probably is in worse shape, and trying to just get that done again as one of the projects for this summer. Obviously, there's no, nothing new about PCBs. There's, there, the state is no longer, I think, involved.
Well, they, you know, Governor Scott did have some funding set aside in his budget proposal.
Yeah.
I think the challenge is that the funding set aside in the budget proposal wouldn't necessarily mitigate all the PCBs that have been found, so I, I would be surprised if the legislature doesn't address it somehow. They'll at least talk about it, we'll see what they do, so.
Yeah. See. And then the, the last thing is, was the addendum that we wanted to bring forth for
The telecom.
The telecom, which is basically the phone systems in the schools are, the space, are getting phased out, but there is a bridge that we can add to the phone system, so they will continue to work.
You know, if you think about your, if, if you ever had an old desktop computer, and you know you could take parts out and replace them with newer parts sometimes, you could replace your hard drive, things like that, you could update your memory, things like that. The system, the way it works right now is it has some parts that are swappable, so we have the ability to put new parts into the unit. So, really, the infrastructure that we have in place, all the way down to the headsets, we're like the one right behind Len, we would be able to retain all of our equipment by swapping out this module, and every school has a unit in their tech closets, and every school would swap that module out to be able to do that. So, very cost-effective compared to a new system. If we were to start from scratch, it would be quite a bit more. When we initially put this system in, the E911 compliance system, we did access grant funding from the state to put that system in, because it was a reasonable cost to upgrade the phone system across the district. The nice thing about this system is you can pick up that phone behind Len, and you can dial a three-number extension, and you're talking to somebody at Tinmouth or somebody at Clarendon. So, there's some great ease of use across the district now that we have this system updated. $16,000, I think, is a really reasonable maintenance fee to be able to use this, you know, for a handful more years, if that makes sense.
So, I'd like to make a motion to accept the, is it really, it's not really a bid, it's just.
We're, yeah.
What's the word?
A motion to authorize the purchase of the equipment with first choice.
All right. Does anyone want to make that motion?
Or you made the motion.
Oh, I'll, oh, yeah, I made, I'll make the motion. I was, I sometimes ask for it, sometimes I do it, you know?
I'll second it.
I'm just a part-time chair.
In a small group, brother.
Any question why, why we're not bringing you multiple bids on this? Did that make sense to everybody that was in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it doesn't make, it makes sense, it's all a unit. All right, all those in favor? All right, that's everybody.
Awesome, thank you, everybody.
Fantastic. And we did not schedule a date, right?
Yeah, there is, actually.
Oh, we did, February 24th.
That sounds right.
Five o'clock, I forgot, because it fit in, because it was before the end.
Before the end.
Before restructuring. Lovely. Community Engagement?
Oh. Yeah, we will have our next meeting March 25th, I want to say, as date, and we'll do.
26, Wednesday still.
Yeah.
Yep.
We'll do community conversations and community engagement. We're going to try and coordinate with policy so that we can maybe have a community conversation and announce it on the cell phone policy, so we can get people who want to have that conversation. And Born did, Born, did set up a 50th anniversary email, it's millriver50@millriverschools.org. If anybody, I've gotten several people who've actually emailed me. The principals all put, will put that in their newsletters, and we'll get that, and we're going to, at our meeting, discuss a little bit more about how to form a committee, because I don't think our committee should be doing it, but hopefully we can get a school and community committee to coordinate some of the ideas that were brainstormed. That's it.
Carol, quick, quick one, because I'll throw this in the Herald, too. The, there were no changes to the message, what you sent along the other day?
We did change one thing, because what did?
Do you mind sending me the updated then?
I'll send you the update, yeah.
Awesome, awesome.
Yeah, we changed just about the graduating class.
Okay, perfect.
Next is negotiations, and we're continuing to negotiate.
Yep.
It's going well.
Yep.
Finance.
And Stephen, if he doesn't jump on, I will do them for him.
He's there.
But, you know, he might have a.
Yeah.
It's not, well, hopefully, he's asleep.
So, we have today payroll warrant dated 2/5/25, FY25, the amount of $649,440.92, so I would ask for a motion to approve that as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Why don't you?
Somebody second.
Discussion. All those in favor? That's everybody.
Then I've got Accounts Payable Warrant dated 2/5/25, General Fund FY25 in the amount of $94,042.55. Another General Fund FY25 in the amount of $16,973.91. After-school Program FY25, the amount of $570.68. Lunch Fund FY25 in the amount of $3,890.77, totaling $115,477.91. Student Activities at Mill River in the amount of $1,401.18. So, I would ask for a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make that motion. Second?
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Good, that's everybody. And there's not a finance meeting.
No.
Probably won't be for a while.
The next important thing we have as far as finance goes is our annual meeting on 2/27 at 7:00 PM.
Great.
Do you need to add someone to, oh, nevermind, nevermind.
So now we're going to move on to Transact Other Legal Business, and I would like someone to make a motion that lets me sign those.
Okay.
Right?
I'll make that motion, to sign the.
I'll second.
I think the wording is not accurate. All right, discussion. All those in favor? Lovely. Everybody. Bronson, I would like to hear from.
Is everyone listening? All right. So, nothing too new for this update, but just some things that have happened recently. Model UN, we had six students go down to New England, Connecticut, to participate in the Yale Model United Nations, the 51st year, and the big hit, who had a bunch of fun, learned a lot of stuff, met, there were delegates, there were a lot of, I believe, something like 1,800 delegates from 30 different countries.
Wow.
Yeah, there's one, yeah, a lot of people there, a lot of new faces to see. Secondly, you've heard about this a lot, but this is my first semester in woodshop, and I love it, it's going great, and everyone else seems to be having fun, and Miss Rob is doing a great job, so, first experience, good. Also, some of the flexible pathways of being, of teacher assistantships and independent studies, I'm, I did a teacher assistant last semester, I'm doing another one this semester in both the AP math courses, and then also an independent study for, I'm the AP French student with Metamucil. And all three of those have gone amazingly, and that program, the flexible pathways, is just very helpful, especially for smaller school, we don't have an AP French program. There's me and, there might have been one other kid who could have done it, but I've said two isn't enough to run a class. So, it's great, and the teachers are very happy, they're willing to be certified in teaching those classes and find new materials, because they don't teach that class. Coming up, we, yeah, winter break, we got back about three or four weeks ago, but, so we've been ramping some stuff up. Next week is singing Valentine's. Unfortunately, the deadline to buy has gone past, but you can see us, the Chamber Singers, so 18 of the top singers from Mill River will be going around Belling County to most local, many local businesses, you can see us at the hospital, or I think we're going to GE, where I'll be here in the morning, if you want to see us, stop by most of the places, highly recommend. Then in March is when things get really busy, we have, I know of at least four, but I believe there's many more music things. There's music in our schools on the 5th with kids from all the schools, and they come in and they, they meet each other, meet their new classmates, or their future classmates, they, and they see what they can look forward to, so they'll see the Jazz Lab and the middle school singing groups, and that's just, I remember coming in, and it was great, and being, that's what kept me going in music, so that's a, it's a great event. And then, we have two districts coming up, there's one this Friday, and then another one March 7, and those are just District, Green Mountain Music District 5. We have, every year, Mill River seems, William Zissimetti said, of her 12 or something years doing districts, Mill River got the most kids in the chorus districts, 15 out of, of, or 10 out of 12 years, where one of the heavyweights in the music scene in Vermont. And then we also tie with Middlebury most years for kids in the jazz ensemble. On the 11th of March is the UGM Jazz Festival, and we'll be sending up our jazz band and jazz combo to that. And then Bistro on the 29th, and tickets will be forthcoming, and I highly recommend you all come, it'll be hour, hour and a half of our three high school honors music ensembles, which sing three or four songs, and there's light snacks, and seeing the West Rellington Hall again, it's very fun, you should all come, see our, see our kids.
And there's two performances.
There's two performances, yes, 22nd, or 29th at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Bring the family, buy a table, table plate. And then one acts for our, we are hosting once again, this is our third year in a row hosting the regional Vermont State Drama one-act festival. And we have, I believe, five schools coming, and then we'll have performances throughout the day, and then we send two schools to represent the festival to the state one-acts, and then from state, they send two to New England. Again, the past two years, we've been lucky enough to get to states, so we're hoping we'll make the cut again. We, this year we have a student director, which is very cool, will be performing tracks, the one-act. Yeah, so that's upcoming events and what's happening.
Wow.
And Mr. DeSette said not to thank him, but I'd like to thank him for donating the spirit tree to Mill River, we had it up for a while and it was, first time we've had it a couple of years, and we really liked it, it was fun to put up to, it took us a few hours. It went over in a half day and we were done by like five.
And just remember, you need, I said to you, you need to set up some leave, because we're all seniors this year.
Yeah.
It needs to keep going.
Yes.
And how many food boxes did you all?
Food boxes, let's see, we originally planned on 60, then I believe we got it up to about 100 that we prepared. Yeah, NHS food baskets back in December?
December.
December, yeah.
So great, and I just want to, like, just, in the music front, like, just, my daughter, when she started preschool at Tinmouth, which is not the biggest school, she literally, like, going into the gym, just for like when they do round up on Friday and they do singing, like, she would have to hold the teacher's hand or sit in their lap. And now she's a third grader, and like, she was up on stage singing in the chorus and just being like, free-willing, and it's like, being able to have teachers that make the kids feel comfortable enough to like go from where she was to where she is now, and she's still very, very shy, but she's able to do it and feels comfortable that like, and she, now she's talking about, you know, coming to Mill River and doing things there, and it's just, I can't thank all of them enough of just being such a great supportive and good role models in that program, and it's just, thank you so much.
You all should totally come to the bistro, you should love it.
I know.
It's really fun, you get little snacks.
It's not just singing, we choreographed some of our songs, too.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much, I really appreciate you coming in and letting us know, like, from a different angle, and it's great. Okay, is there any other legal business that we'd like to talk about? All right, agenda building, but.
So I'll mention again, annual meeting 2/27, 7:00 PM, that'll be in the library, actually, so a little different. Then we've got reorg on March 5th. So on reorg, I've got a note, code of ethics we'll look at again as a board, A policies we'll attach and share so that folks can be aware, because those are really the board-centered policies, and then I've got open meeting law, Robert's rules. So I'll, I'll work up a really quick resource to go with our reorg materials there that addresses that. Then we'll go through all the fun stuff of what's our, what's our media source of record, the Rettland Herald, who's our bank, all those fun things. So that'll be a pretty packed meeting, just getting through all of that fun stuff. We traditionally don't schedule anything else for that reorg meeting, but I wonder about this B3 policy, because we'll.
I think that's fine.
We'll get this in the Herald, are folks comfortable bringing B3 for second read to our reorg meeting, knowing that our new board members, if we have new board members, would have to just do a real quick study of that B3. Okay, perfect, I'll throw that on for 3/5, we'll get that in the Herald to have it ready for that. So that's all I got for agenda building.
I, yeah, I also think that if we have some Buildings and Grounds things, I think we can.
Sure, if, if, yeah, if we get a bid or two that we can bring, yes, yeah. Totally fair.
Do we, did you find someone, or do we have someone to run the meeting on the 27th? Isn't that?
Yes, we need somebody to be nominated, to be elected for next year, because that's something we do, we will call for nominations from the floor and vote from the floor, so when the person who's been doing it is willing to keep doing it, that becomes really easy. When the person who's been doing it is stepping down, that gets kind of hard, because the annual meeting doesn't always have huge attendance, so finding somebody in the room who's willing to do it, so if you know anybody who might be willing to do that.
For next year.
For next year, ask them if they're willing to come to the meeting this year. If they're not, we could, you know, that's a good question, can you nominate somebody who's not there? I think you can, I think that's reasonable, as long as we know that person would be willing. I think we've done that before.
What's the position exactly?
It's the clerk for the annual meeting, so the duties of the clerk are pretty simple, you're going to take, you're going to record the minutes of the annual meeting, and you're going to preside over the vote counting on town meeting day, and then you take the rest of the year off.
Okay, so it's not the person who runs the meeting, that's the?
Moderator.
Moderator, you don't.
No, clerk takes the minutes and then presides over the ballot counting.
Carol pointed, do we need to have somebody else do?
We can, we can get that later, as long as we have one signature.
Just double checking.
Yeah.
Okay. Executive session?
None, none aware.
Okay. Then I would like to adjourn by consensus. We are adjourned at 8:38?
Excellent, thank you, everybody.